All right, we have one more member coming, but we can probably get started to do our open forum and do our minutes. So I called a meeting of the planning board for Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty four. Six oh three. First item we have on the agenda is. Open forum, so this is for anything that's not currently on the agenda this evening. Anybody from the board have anything?
No.
Okay.
Actually, I do have one.
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure who we have.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. I see. Which one? I have one, one item every day. We got an email on some of the things that Chris had for. Four items in particular that she should have maybe have particular working groups on, etc. We'll need to discuss that a bit further, I think. Everybody has the information if we can review all that, and I think we maybe put that on our next agenda to discuss what's going on. If I want to make sure everybody had that as well.
Yeah, and I want to get that.
Yes, right? So that's good. Just want to make sure everybody had that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, on our administrative items. Why don't we knock out the minutes first if we can do that?
I moved that we approved minutes. November twenty seven, twenty twenty three. Second.
Second, anybody have any comments? Another call for the vote. We have to roll call vote. So.
Hi.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, Dave. I'm sorry.
Hi, Kristen.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Allison.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, Wayne.
All right, next item on the agenda, ZB A case twenty twenty three dash twenty one, appeal and. Zero Toby Garden Street. This is a zoning board of appeals referral. Who are. Are us making the decision? Just looking at it on. Uh, this just was on my.
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah, I'm Dan Gorman here. Yeah. No, I handed them out when I I popped in here. And okay, so this is primarily just a synopsis of what's in.
Yeah, I synthesized it for layman such as myself here. If no one else, right, just a three pager, and I think Wayne is in your inbox as well.
No new information over what was.
No new information, I'm just distilled.
We don't like take new information last second.
No, forgive me, no, it's just distilled.
Okay. Okay. So. Generally, we're, so you know, we're a referral board to the zoning board of appeals. Zoning board of appeals is where. Your argument, your fight is, etc.
Understood.
That you have going on, but obviously, we make a referral and in a case such as this, or this, this is affected by the zoning, which we're heavily involved as well. So. I think, has everybody read through the case? What's going on here on the board? Okay. Any items we want to discuss initially, anybody have a starting point for us on this one? Here to take it off? I think.
A legal issue?
Yeah, most of it is. Which is zoning board rules.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would certainly defer to any of the attorneys, attorneys on this board for. You'd be back.
Sure. I will give my two cents. First part is what I saw from from the read through here. And my understanding is that the the property, two properties were created and Toby Garden Street was putting, taking was taken, and then Toby Garden Street was put in, and that thus subdivided the lot into two lots.
Yes, two nonconforming lots.
Nonconforming lots.
Yes.
One form or another at the time. And this was in nineteen fifty two.
Fifty four.
Fifty four, okay. Okay. Okay, so nineteen fifty four is when this all happened. And the land mass was divided into two lots, one of one eleven thousand five hundred ninety square feet and the other nineteen one six six square feet. And at the time in nine, as of nineteen fifty four, the zoning was twenty thousand square feet with a hundred feet of frontage.
That's right.
And as of the time, the road went. Road went, that was that piece of. Okay, so. My understanding and what practice this been in these cases. The zoning in place at the time the subdivision happens is the zoning that governs the lots that are created.
Yes.
At that point, so as of nineteen fifty four, you need twenty thousand square feet, that eleven thousand five hundred ninety. Might have the requisite hundred feet of frontage. But I just don't see that you've got a land mass.
That's right.
The void. So I don't see how nonconforming lots can be created all the time.
Yes.
People create them on purpose for whatever reason that is. And they get created when roads go in, etc., especially town taking a road. We have all these little triangles, those are all nonconforming lots. So I heard some, I see that as as the hurdle here, that the zoning at the time the lot was created was twenty thousand square feet with a hundred feet of frontage. I don't see how you get around that at all, and I understand your arguments you've made in here. But I think from my position on the board, that that's kind of where I will, and I'd be interested here by current members' positions as well.
Yeah, I think you summed it up well, looking at Amy Questle's email, Jim, the part of the record. That's her points, her opinion seems to be that the lot at the time the taking did not conform zoning as such, you can't make use of that precedent. So I think that's where. That's where the argument is.
Yeah, so that was through the lens of grandfather, was my understanding, right? This, these are not grandfatherable lots, not on page three of the handout. And I think Wayne, this is also in your inbox, it's a three page video. Where that, the new Toby Garden Road created those two triangular lots.
Yeah.
Either of which, both of the, each of which is under twenty thousand square feet, i.e. They're not contiguous lots and they're they're nonconforming as a result of that. At the time of that taking, the owner was compensated within the same material threshold as the other fifteen lot owners who were also affected by that taking.
When the road went, wrecked the lot.
So on page two of the handout, which is, this is mentioned somewhere in it as well, right? According to Nony versus Commonwealth, owners are entitled to be compensated for the fair market value of that which they have been deprived. The measure of damages is the market value at the date of the taking and the land taken and the diminution in value due to the taking of the owner's remaining. So with that in mind, this owner was compensated no more and in several cases, less than their neighboring owners who were in no way affected by this taking. So there was no point B here, right? Compensated seventy five dollars. They're the only lot, nonconforming as a result of the taking, which would suggest that the remaining lots, those two nonconforming lots were considered to have not suffered any diminution in value. Right, that that would be the conclusion that one would take from from Nony versus Commonwealth and from the fact that they were compensated the same as everyone else who in no way was rendered nonconforming as a result of that.
So assuming, so assuming the town got it wrong, I I'm not saying that's true. And didn't compensate correctly, how does that get you over the hurdle of the zoning?
Right, so if you were to say, okay, we just got it wrong at a point in time.
Because it wasn't you that didn't get compensated with some long term process or injury.
The same owner, it's the same owner at the time of the taking, that ownership has not changed.
Okay.
So it's not me at the moment, it's the owner.
Okay.
Right, who we're looking to compensate. Right, so the the owner stands to lose something as a result, so same owner. They're saying, fast forward however many of that kids, they're saying, hey, we were never, you know, we were compensated same as everyone else, no one else was rendered nonconforming. We've got these two lots that you see the northern and southern lot on the map. So I get where you're going, David, and I would, I would kind of, that's where my mind went as well.
Why don't you go back to town and say we should have gotten compensated better instead of getting a zoning relief?
Well, perhaps, and then you look at the northern lot of the two lots that were created. That northern lot couldn't have been grandfathered based on what we've heard, you know, so far, prior to this appeal. We know grandfathering is not on the table, the northern lot. Many years later, after the owner had since sold off the northern lot. So not the same owner, that northern lot was granted a variance. To our knowledge, we have requested the variance, we have not seen the the variance yet. But again, just in terms of, my deduction is that we know it's not grandfatherable. We know they weren't compensated for any diminution of value for their lot. We know the northern lot was later built upon and probably granted a variance. Now we're looking at the southern lot, what would be different between the northern and southern lot in this case? The deduction would be. It should be, if one would think that a variance would apply to the southern lot as well, as there's no difference between the southern lot and the northern lot.
One of the lots gets really close, and it would be very important to see that variance, obviously. You guys find what, if there was a variance offered on the northern lot.
Yeah, the red lot has been.
That's the one that's built on.
Yes, that has since been built upon, however, both lots were under twenty thousand square feet, so there's no.
And they didn't manage to accomplish the twenty thousand square feet by getting some from anybody else.
No, and even to this day, it's still under twenty thousand. In point of fact, the southern lot is the lot that actually had residual frontage. If you were to really look at this and you say, well, who does the tie go to? You would assume the southern lot because the southern lot actually had frontage from old Toby Garden Street. So I I wouldn't even say tie goes to anyone, I'd say they're they're equal. But if you had to pick one, I'd go for the southern because they're both under twenty thousand and the southern lot actually does have frontage prior to the taking, whereas the the northern lot had no such frontage.
That frontage is created by the road. Every new lot we put in, they didn't have frontage before and the frontage is full roadway that goes in. So the new road Toby Garden went in that heat. It ended up.
Right, again, I would say that they're dead even, they're both tied exactly down to the, you know, to the millimeter, right? In in terms of tail of the tape.
I think you'd have, you'd have to find how they got the building permit on the first one.
Right, we have requested that in October, we have not gotten anywhere back of that.
So it sounds like then what the argument that you're making, you know, like this is what I'm hearing is not that you have a zoning entitlement to do this, but that you should get a variance.
Yes, that's right.
That's your argument.
Right.
Right, yeah, equal, otherwise it's like, yeah.
Right, so like you're not saying that the compliance zoning at the time said this zoning exception should go in and should get the zoning relief. What you're saying is, or hearing is. The issue is, is the other lot was granted a variance, we're trying to track, we know it exists, we believe it exists, trying to track it down. This lot should be granted a variance as well, and that's the, that seems to be the argument that you're making.
That's absolutely right, selfishly, would I want it to be grandfathered, great, even better, but no.
It doesn't seem like, okay, so and then in that case, because Scott said like we're just an advisory board.
Right.
I think, you know, the decision to grant a variance on zoning relief is squarely with the purview of the ZB A.
Right.
So my inclination, now that I understand your argument, is to just defer to them, which you want to report to the ZB A unless other people have stuff they want, so that's my understanding, so it's not a question for.
Are there two cases, are you trying to bring two to the ZB A or just the variance? You're going to that.
I mean, we'll take either, right, again, I'm being.
There are two before us, right, Emily? Okay.
Yeah, there are two separate ones.
We threw both hats into the ring, I mean, again, just being like completely transparent, yeah, sure, give me the grand, right, obviously, but I don't think there's actually a rational explanation for, I don't think rational thought would dictate we deserve a grandfather. I'm honestly.
Yep.
Variance, that seemed, that seems fair.
Yeah, okay. I would think we would take position on the zoning recommending denial of zoning grandfather. And then potentially just deferring on on the variance, because you'll be able to hopefully be able to show them whatever happened with that other property. We have no idea what happened. Plus the variance.
Would the ZB A have records on that, or would the planning board have records? Of the variance?
That would be the ZB A slash the building department.
Right, and I don't want to conjecture too much here, I'm assuming that no one was able to find such areas. But maybe.
Well, it's only been since October and you've got two, maybe three, maybe a whole.
It's March.
Yeah, it's not unreasonable if they haven't.
Every property.
I hope I'm wrong, by the way.
Every property in town has a file on, regardless of your house, there's a file.
Right.
As to how it was created, this other lot, it got a building permit.
There was a house that was built subsequent to fifty four.
So there's a rationale for that, it should be in that file.
Right.
Now, that's not to say people don't make mistakes too, the permit could have been issued and shouldn't have been, you know, that that happens.
I'm with you, it it, and that's a tough pill to swallow, and that especially the original owner still has the southern lot.
Yeah.
And that owner was never compensated more than, they were compensated in a way that would indicate at that point in time, hey, don't worry, these lots are still buildable, you're you're, we're giving you seventy five, we get your neighbor a hundred, we're giving you seventy five, don't worry about it, you still have buildability here. One would assume that was, there was a conversation like that that took place. But to take that assumption and say, no, that conversation didn't take place ever, they were okay with the seventy five, and that northern lot was done completely in error, that feels like a stretch.
Could be.
We'll never know, but it feels like a stretch.
It does, it does, things can happen, but.
For sure.
I see that the southern lot is in the offer protection overlay district, you know, the northern lot is as well.
Not off the top of my head, that's a.
I would say it's highly likely.
Yeah.
The majority of that story is in the next, the protection.
Right, yeah, and that that would be the next hurdle, right? But we just want a puncher's chance here.
Yeah, well, you're not, well, you wouldn't be going under common zoning anyway, we'd be looking at fifty four, so you're looking at twenty thousand square feet. Only you'd be stuck with the sixty because of the APOD, you'd have to make that. Pretty good, grandfathering basically. So. That would kind of be what I was looking at is, you know.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'll make a motion that we defer into the DBM's matters with the recommendation that the, the argument about grandfathering the zoning be denied and with respect to the variance, it would be just subject to whatever the the DBA determines will be assessed with that account.
Second. Anybody else out there on this one?
Okay. I I I agree with the, I agree with the the man who was handling it, but what I understood the two issues to be is one is an appeal from the building inspector's determination that it wasn't grandfathered. And it, and then the second one was the variance, so. I I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of the terminology.
Yeah, to clarify my motion, so I'd recommend that the appeal from the building inspector's decision from, would defer to the ZB A with the recommendation that the appeal from the building inspector's determination of the property was not grand, grandfathered, be, appeal be denied and that with respect to the variance, defer to the judgment of the DBA if it exists.
Echo my second.
Okay. Wayne, any, okay with that?
I I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
A call for a roll call of vote, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Kristen, aye.
Scott, aye.
Allison, aye.
Jen, aye.
Wayne abstains.
Okay, very good. Good luck.
Good luck.
Good night with your research.
Thank you, thank you.
Good research. That one's.
Could you reuse?
You can reuse them, you can reuse.
Less printing.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thanks so much.
Okay, next item we have is A and R, twenty twenty three dash thirteen, two seventy five and two eighty five West Street. Okay, anybody here for this one? Yeah. All right, pretty straightforward. Changing some land. Are we straightening it out or are we curving it?
Curving it, right.
Making it crooked so that it conforms?
It's like the septic, you can drive in four.
Yeah.
For two seventy five?
Yeah, whereas we don't have anybody here speaking to this, we don't have any other information on this, so what we got. They're doing equal exchange of land, they want to make their lot lines crooked and go for it.
It doesn't make anything nonconforming.
You can have crooked lot line. Anybody have anything else on this? A motion, somebody would like to make one? To endorse maybe?
Make a motion to endorse the plan of land for two seventy five and two eighty five West Street dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, second.
Second.
Favor, roll call vote again.
Uh, Dave, I'm staying in my firm's consulting level.
Okay.
Kristen, aye.
Scott, aye.
Allison, aye.
Jen, aye.
Wayne, aye.
All right, moving on to our next item, we have a public hearing for three, three, three and zero Franklin Street subdivision. I will be abstaining from this case, Kristen, you're gonna take over, so. I'll just be sitting here with a straight face.
So I guess I open the hearings and the public can talk and then we talk. Or we could sort of talk about what we.
We've opened the hearing, and then you'll want to waive the reading of the notice.
Okay.
Unless anybody wants to leave the vote. Generally, yeah. So that would be the first vote. And and open the public hearing. Waive the reading of the notice, and then we move on to the presentation.
Like Brady Consulting.
Agreed, consulting, okay, and and here, sir. I mean, people.
All right, so.
All yours.
All right, we will open the public hearing for a three thirty three and zero Franklin Street subdivision. It is now six twenty five. First order of business will be to waive the reading.
Entertainer motion.
Entertainer, uh, motion to waive the reading, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Aye, aye.
Kristen, aye.
Allison, aye. Jen, aye.
Aye, Wayne.
All right, now we will move to the presentation from. Oh, wait, you have to vote the whole minute. Oh, okay. Okay. So.
I moved it, I moved it with the open and public hearing on three, three, three.
Second. Uh, any discussions? With all?
Aye, aye.
Kristen, aye.
Allison, aye.
Jen, aye.
Wayne, aye.
We'll open the public hearing and hear from Brady and Associates, please.
Thank you, Scott Bernard with Brady Consulting here at the applicant Paul Bedrow. Also with us tonight is Rick Brady through remote access. What we're here for is a definitive subdivision. We're planning to do a three lot subdivision. The existing property is about six and a half acres. There is an existing dwelling already on site with an existing septic system, and the plan is to retain both of those properties. This is the existing conditions here. So again, there's, there's one single family dwelling with leaching fields up in this area, it's, it's currently being pumped upward. The thought with this design was to have a minimal impacts to construction, tree lines, etc. So we have designed it in a way where we will actually be retaining this leaching field, but it will be going to the new lot. Then a new septic system will be going into this existing house. As far as tree removal, it'll be quite minimal, there'll be a few up in the front of this area. The existing drainage conditions of the site, for the most part, it drains from the middle of the lot back down here to the wetland. There are a few locations pretty typical where it flows offsite to this, a butter, flows offsite to this, a butter, and then a little bit flows back toward the street. This is the proposed condition. We are designing a, about a two hundred foot, I think it's a hundred and eighty foot roadway, it'll be a private roadway. The width was dictated by the fire department. We're also proposing a new septic system for this dwelling. Again, this septic system will be retained for this dwelling, and then a new septic system for the existing dwelling. There will also be public water connected into this, public electric. And as far as the drainage design, so the drainage is designed in a way that all impervious coverage, the, the the stormwater runoff will actually be decreased from existing condition to proposed condition. So these dwellings will have root drains which will run into subsurface storage. And then overland flow from the impervious coverage that was created by the driveway, the porch and the roadway. That's all directed into this rain garden. So this rain garden is just designed to hold the water, and then that water will be directed down here to this infiltration basin where the water will be infiltrated on site. So we are requesting a waiver to allow for an easement rather than a separate lot for the drainage basin. The reason for that, we we do have an option to create a separate lot, but the location would likely be up in this area to be able to create a separate lot to maintain the minimum frontage in the minimum area. The reason we decided to put the basin down here was again, the natural grade, it slopes down this way. And also in this area, there's some existing natural screening which will provide a nice buffer to this neighbor here at three forty three. This is basically an open field here, and there's very minimal trees in between. So that's the reason for that waiver request. Unless the applicant has anything like to add, you'd have to go turn over to questions.
Do you have any questions at the board right now? Well, thank you.
I I just have a comment, well, a comment and a question, I like the concept of reusing the septic, do you have a passing title five? For the existing septic?
I believe we do. If if not, if not, we won't.
So are you removing the fire hydrant or putting it in a different spot?
Uh, no, there's no proposed changes to the fire hydrant, there's one existing right here.
Have you had a chance to look at the letter from dated November thirtieth, PGV Engineering LLC, the county peer review engineer?
Yes, I have.
Give a response to any of those comments, or have you guys talked since then and kind of had a better resolve to those comments?
So I believe all the comments have been addressed, there was one comment that there's no assigned easement width for this existing water line. It is an existing easement and it's undefined. The the owner here at three forty three has the right to maintain that line. For all the proposed water lines, we are proposing new easements with the minimum width that's required by the planning board.
Kristen, Pat, would you, would you like to chime in and add anything?
Sure, thank you, Pat Brennan, the the board's peer review engineer, I I did also submit a letter dated January third. So it was last week, based on the revised plans that Scott and Brady Consulting submitted. And basically, there was just a couple of comments remaining, one Scott just addressed, and that was the existing water surface for three forty three Franklin Street. There's an easement, but they, they, they're not sure what the width of that easement is, so, so it's not shown on the plan. And I had asked that they show those, they did show the easement that's required for lot B, because that crosses lot C. Um, lot B being the existing dwelling that's out there. Um, excuse me. Um, one of my recommendations, and, and Scott said that it's going to be a private road. One of my recommendations would, was that it would be a private road in perpetuity for a few reasons. One is that on previous projects, the D P W has objected to hammerhead turnarounds due to, um, difficulty with snow plowing and, and snow storage. The second reason was that there's no public utilities within the road. And the, the third reason, uh, is that several waivers are required to construct the project as proposed, there's actually only two waivers now. And the fourth reason was that similar roads have been approved as private, um, and I would refer everyone to Cape Verde Terrace, which is just down the street, just down Franklin Street. Um, that's a private road serving two or three dwellings as well, um, very similar to this. Um, in, in the response, when, when Brady responded to my comments, they said they did not oppose it, um, the designation as a private road. So my recommendation would be if the board approves a project, that that be a condition of reapproval. My only other, so Scott had, um, hit on the requesting a waiver for allowing the basin and the drain line between the rain garden basin to be an easement, so that's one of the waivers that they're requesting. Um, and then the second waiver is that your rules and regulations require a fifty foot buffer of existing vegetation between all basins or pre-treatment facilities adjacent uses of structures. Um, and they don't have that around the, um, the rain garden nor the basin that's within the easement, um, and it's. There's, there's really no existing vegetation out there other than grass, um, to provide that buffer anyway. The, um, my only other comment was in relation to maintenance for the basin, and, um, since, well, provided the board requires that the road be private, then the basin would be privately maintained by the homeowners. So I, I, I think the maintenance, you know, obviously, when they produce homeowners association documents, they're gonna have to include the maintenance responsibility of the stormwater system in those documents, so that that gets, that, there, there's a mechanism for that to be maintained going forward, since it won't be maintained by the town. All of the other comments that I had in my November third, thirtieth letter had been, um, fully addressed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Can you ask anybody else any questions right now? So Pat, I do have a couple of questions, and maybe Scott, you can answer this. Um, as far as the rain basin is concerned, is there, do you see another way to offer any type of a buffer?
We are, we are providing a little bit of a buffer here, so we are retaining existing trees. And the, it, it really has to be a location that would allow us to capture the, the runoff from the roadway. So, you know, you really can't put a buffer on the, the left side of it, if you will, um, and to the right side of it, where we are retaining trees as, as much as we can.
And did y'all read the, um, comments from the fire department?
Yeah, so I asked about the hydrant. Oh, gosh. Because, and they said that, um, the plan shows a fire hydrant at the end of the road, which per the notice is being removed. The addition of a fire hydrant at the top of the street shall be provided. The closest hydrant is over eight hundred feet away from the last purpose house.
Yeah, so, so the best that we could tell, I think that that might have been a carryover from a previous, um, project. Because this, you know, the hydrant, the hydrant is right here, so it's not the other feet away, we, we're not proposing to remove any hydrants.
We didn't see Scott.
Next question. So we've got, I'm sure the public's gonna weigh in on this, to kind of tee it up. Several complaints from butters and people in the neighborhood with strong concerns about the effect that they believe this will have on water and storm water flow due to development. I know your firm looks at these issues, I'm sure you have looked at these issues. Can you explain to us, to the public, what you're proposing to do to deal with stormwater runoff and how that process works? So you can educate the public, at least with your perspective, so they can then respond and provide any other questions or concerns based on what you have to say to that?
Sure, yeah, that's a great question, that would probably be my first concern too, if someone's building a house nearby.
Particularly with the pond on site as well.
Yep.
So that's, we've been getting a fair amount of communications to that effect of those concerns.
Sure, so stormwater runoff, it can be increased when you're taking either grass or trees, and you're replacing it with some type of hard surface, like a roof, a driveway, et cetera. Um, our plan to handle the, the increase in stormwater runoff from the roofs from the building, that'll be fully infiltrated on site through these individual subsurface chambers. Um, and then as far as the increase in purvis coverage for the roadway and the driveway, uh, that's all directed to this rain garden, which then goes over to this basin. Um, this basin will fully infiltrate all stormwater runoff for the, the two-year, twenty-five-year storm. Um, the net, there, there will be a net of decrease, so essentially, what the existing runoff is right now on, into the pond, onto the street, to the budding properties in both, um, the, the, the flow rate and the volume. Um, what is proposed will decrease that, so it'll be a net improvement to, to the neighborhood.
And just to comment on that is, can you, I think this would be helpful, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but can you explain how your discipline is when you're doing these projects? How you go about assessing the existing stormwater? And how you go about assessing with what your, the impervious coverage that you're putting on there? How to calculate these various storm events, how to process that stormwater, so it doesn't go on neighborhood property, it doesn't flow on, increase the volume of the pond? Can you walk us through that methodology that you use, how you do that?
Sure, yep, so for the most part, this is, this is dictated by D E P, that's a Massachusetts stormwater. Um, what we do when we look at existing conditions is we look at the grades, um, and we figure out. We figure out where the, the rainwater is going right now, so onsite, if it rains, if a raindrop hits right here, it's gonna be flowing into the pond. If a raindrop hits right up here, it's gonna be flowing down this way. Um, so we're looking at elevation sixty-six right up here, so it's about a four-foot drop down to sixty-two, so we can tell that's where that rainwater goes. So we first identify where the areas are, where the break lines are for rainwater going this way, rainwater going that way. Um, and then we calculate the areas, and there's various areas, there's areas for just grass, for roadways, for impervious surfaces, um, for, for woodland, um, and each of those has a different rate of runoff. Um, and then we, we calculate what the existing runoff flow is and existing runoff volume is. And then when we go to look at our proposed design, we look to maintain the natural, the natural flow of a raindrop, if you will, so again, if a raindrop hits here, it's naturally wanting to flow this way. So our goal is to maintain that natural flow. Um, and then we also want to make sure that we are not increasing any runoff, so there's no additional rainwater going anywhere.
I think that's helpful of this, but, and again, this is something that's prescribed by stormwater management practices that are propagated by D E P, so you follow those standards and you put this together. And then our engineer that works for the town analyzes that to make sure it's, it's done properly, it doesn't just take their say-so, he does his own analysis to make sure this is correct. Is that right?
Correct.
Can we speak yet?
Eventually, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a copy of the, um, you know, one of the things that the public might be interested in, Melanie, is the, seeing the stormwater management design, have the, the reports that you provided us? Do you have a hard copy here?
I do not have a hard copy.
If anyone's interested in that, I'd be with contact, Emily, or they can, we can figure out.
That you, if people want to consult their own engineer, they can bounce that off their own, to make sure they don't pull the town's engineering, but it's okay.
Um, these aren't, and just to clarify or to add to David's comments, these are not recommendations, these are requirements set by the state that have to be met in terms of managing stormwater.
Yeah, and if, if I may, um, their mass D E P does have the stormwater standards where you have to meet those regulations, but the planning board's rules and regulations actually go further. Um, the state requires you to not increase the rate of runoff. The Duxbury Planning Board rules and regulations don't allow you to increase the rate or the volume. So it goes further than the state, so there's more protection in the local regulations. And, um, as Dave had alluded to, that's when I'm reviewing a project, the stormwater is usually the first thing I look at, and it's the thing that I pay most attention to, because that's the thing that will, um, impact the butters the most if, if there's something wrong with those calculations, so that's, that's the main focus of my job in, in this situation.
Thanks, Pat. Any other questions from the board right now?
Short question, um, who created the environmental impact assessment and evaluation statement?
Um, I believe our company did.
And why do you guys want to keep it a private way?
The private way was a, it was a recommendation from, from Pat.
Yes, the hammerhead?
I think he believed, he mentioned because of the hammerhead and because of the, there being no public utilities in the roadway.
And at present, you're asking for those two waivers that are in Pat's letter?
That's correct, yes. They're, they're also on, on the, the cover sheet of the, of the plan sets.
A waiver for the easement for the basin and the fifty-foot buffer?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No, good time.
Yeah.
Wayne, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I, I do have a question, but it's a question largely for the board. Um, the question is, what's the standard here? Is this a discretionary determination? Or if they, uh, dot all the i's and, and cross all the t's, do we have to say yes? And that's, that's the question I have.
Yeah, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is given the fact that they are asking for waivers that we, that allows the board, that they cannot proceed as a right, we, that allows the board to impose conditions and have a dialogue with the applicant about any conditions we want to impose. As a kind of quid pro quo for any waivers that the board may be applying to grant, but this is not being asked for as a right. So they can't just get approval because they need, they have asked for those two waivers. But what I'm hearing from the applicant as well is, it's pushed, they couldn't do it, make this as a right, at least with the first one, I haven't heard about the second waiver that you're asking for, but because they're, they're asking for waivers, the planning board has input in, in, in the process, and it's not just something they can do as a right.
So, David, the issue then is, if they don't ask for waivers, they could just do this? It, it, this seems to me. It seems to be.
It's part of the subdivision control act, yes, if they're not asking for waivers, then it's.
Correct, and they meet our, our, our rules and regulations, and they meet the requirements of the, of the subdivision control law, they can proceed as a right.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to go over the two waivers again, just so everybody's clear?
Sure. The two waivers that we're asking for, one, I'll just read it verbatim, basins and associated outlet aprons and swales shall be incorporated into separate land parcels exclusively for purposes of stormwater management, rather than be shown as easements. Um, so that merely pertains to the infiltration basin, uh, down in this area. And again, we are requesting this location, rather than creating a separate parcel, um, to provide additional screen to this property and to allow for the natural flow of the stormwater. And again, we, there is a, there is an alternative where we could, um, eliminate that waiver request, but we believe that this is the best design, that's the reason that we're asking for that. Um, and then the second waiver, it's a fifty-foot buffer zone of existing vegetation between all basins or pre-treatment facilities and adjacent uses or structures. So, back to the design. So that pertains to this rain garden here, and to this infiltration basin. Um, so we do not have a natural fifty-foot buffer, um, around either side of it, um, so that is the second waiver that we're requesting.
And is there a way that you can provide a fifty-foot buffer? Around both of those?
We would have to look into it. But, but again, I, I believe, we, we believe that this is, that this is the best design, the least impactful, and it provides a nice buffer, um, to the butters and.
So I might be showing my age here, but, and, and not that, not that we don't, uh, not that the planning board always gets everything right. However, uh, what we have done historically is if, if, if the applicant can demonstrate that the design can be completed without waiver requests, but think that it's better with them, we, we generally, uh, tend toward granting a waiver if it improves the design. Um, personally, I, I see that, um, with the first one, it seems clear that you can, you can get around that waiver, so to speak. But I, I don't see how you would be able to do, how you would be able to avoid this, asking for the second waiver.
So in order to remove the need for the second waiver, we'd have to reevaluate the pre-treatment, uh, because we clearly can't have a fifty-foot buffer around the, the rain garden. But I, I, again, we would have to look into it, but I, I believe that we could.
It should sound the same there at this point, I'm sure, by the way. I think Rick, excuse me, Scott, Rick, you wanted to say something?
I did, thank you. The way that section of the regulations reads too, it's a fifty-foot buffer of existing vegetation shall be retained between all basins or pre-treatment facilities and adjacent uses or structures. So we actually are providing a fifty-foot buffer to the adjacent residential lot, um. I'm not sure that the pre-treatment really necessarily counts, I know it's a waiver that has been requested on that section before, but it does read between adjacent uses or structures, and I'm not sure whether the rain gardens really count as adjacent uses or structures. Um, so just wanted to point that out as well, the rain gardens is a low-impact development that was been around for a while now, but wasn't around when this particular section of the planning board regulations was written. I, I just wanted to mention that.
Thanks, Rick. Pat, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I, I, I agree with, uh, Rick's reading of that, um, and I'm, I'm, while we're going through this, I'm looking back at some other projects to see when, um, if, if that's been granted recently. The, the most recent, on the Parkside subdivision, they did not need it on the, um, the paddock, um, subdivision, which is Cooper Hill Way, they didn't need it because they did subsurface, but I believe they, they required waivers for the subsurface systems there. And then I believe on the, um, Hawthorne Hill, they did not. They may have needed it, and I'm trying to find that right now, um, they may have needed it for, um, the basin, between the basin and St. George Street, but I'm just looking through my files right now to see if that's what they did there. Actually, on the, on the Hawthorne Hill, they did request a waiver for that one. Rick was involved in that one, so I'm not sure if that waiver was granted, but I know that they requested it.
I'm checking that right now, too.
I, I just asked one other question, this guy looking at, with the comments we got from people in the neighborhood. Their concern was potential, um, concern about the negative impact on wetlands. Can you explain what methodology went through to protect, even though the conservation commission typically is, is the authority on wetlands, but just to kind of explain the methodology went through for that issue?
Sure. Yeah, so there, there's a few concerns with, with the wetlands, uh, one of them is, is building in close proximity to the wetlands. Um, so the conservation commission established a hundred-foot buffer zone, but this, this is the pond right here, so this is a hundred feet away. Uh, we're not proposing any development whatsoever within the hundred-foot buffer zone, so there'll be no impacts in that way. Um, another way is for, um, impervious coverage outside that buffer to create runoff that, that would go into the wetlands, or in this case, the ponds. And as we discussed, it's going through this infiltration basin. And as we discussed, it's going through this infiltration basin, which is actually going to reduce the runoff going to the pond.
Again, that's something you're required to take into account by law when you're doing this, develop the proposed development.
Exactly.
The um, looking at my files, I I have the decision for Hawthorne Hill, and the board did grant the waiver. They reduced it from the buffer from fifty feet to twenty feet. On that one.
Any other questions from the board? Wayne, any more questions?
None for me.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to confirm that you have a two hundred foot frontage for each of the new lots that you're recruiting?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we we meet the minimum frontage in the minimum lot requirement.
Pat, anything else you'd like to say?
Uh, no, like I said, they've they've addressed my comments except for the couple of waivers. And you know, my recommendation that it be a private road perpetuity.
Should we talk about that now? We can make it a condition after we've said, yeah. So we could make it a condition. That was that was really my inclination after what we've been learning about private roads.
Yeah, and what Pat said about the storm, the the basin being. Uh, managed by homeowners, right, that is a condition.
Um, that's one thing I didn't hear, I've Pat mentioned homeowners association, but I didn't hear you mention it. Is that something that would be part of the plan, did you know?
It it would, it would have to be, yeah. Somebody would have to be responsible for maintaining both the rain garden and the basin and the roadway. Yep.
Just double check.
Specifically, what happens in these developments is, as a condition, we ask for HOA to be created that gets put on record. The registry that spells out the maintenance obligations between usually these three homeowners. Care for those items and to fund the repair.
Yes, yep. The applicants want to do that.
All right, anything else? I think, uh, Rick, I didn't ask you, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I was checking some other subdivisions we've done in town, too. Nash Road, um, we had done a local street on that one, very similar to this project. Uh, we did not request a waiver for the fifty foot drainage, natural vegetation. Uh, in that particular one. We provided fifty feet to the street and the adjacent property. We did not provide fifty feet to the proposed roadway. So I I think we used the same interpretation that I mentioned earlier. Um, that the roadway that we're building wasn't necessarily an adjacent use or structure.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or any other thoughts, questions in the board? We go ahead and post. All right, so do we need a question? Okay, all right, now we'll open it up to the public, so we just let people. All right, so we'll open up to the public, and we'll ask you for your name and your address, and.
You can see how it goes.
Okay. My time limit runs out right now, okay, but can I go ahead and start, please?
So I'm Jill Stahl, I live at two ninety-three Franklin Street, I've lived there since nineteen sixty-two. And my question to you is, the water that goes into the pond doesn't stay in the pond. It goes up, which isn't up, it's down, and then crosses Franklin Street. On my property, so my property is constantly flooded because of the flood zone. Um, you're adding and you're putting things into the pond, which is I'm going to put it. Onto my property and my brother's property, which is he he inherited my grandfather's farm, so he is technically abutted and I'm on the other side of him. So you're adding water to this pond and thinking it's staying there, but it's not. It's actually, I've thought with the town for years or months at least to come and look at it, and they said the water goes. From the winter way side of Franklin to our side of Franklin, and it doesn't, it goes the other way. And so the water is going to go away from the pond and in your picture up. What do you plan to do about that? Because the drainage basin has got to go somewhere, it's got to go to the pond.
So. So this basin is actually designed as an infiltration basin, so the water will infiltrate down into the ground. Uh, the amount of water going into this pond is actually reduced from existing conditions. Um, and the water does flow in this direction. This pond is down here at about elevation fifty-four. Uh, let's see, up near the road. Around about elevation sixty-four, so it's a ten foot drop from the roadway down down to the pond.
But not. She's still right.
Oh, to this side?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Because that's where it slips down, right into my direction.
So we had a, we had a wetland scientist come up here and delineate the limits of the wetlands. Um, so the wetlands do extend a little bit beyond the pond. Um, and this is what he determined to be the extent of the wetlands. Um, and again, we're not, we're not adding any additional water into the pond, we're actually reducing it because we're. Creating this infiltration basin that will that will capture a lot of that.
But isn't it going into the groundwater?
It goes in the groundwater, correct?
Which is what feeds the springs that go along my property and floodparks, my yard. Years ago, the the town, the the ditch from. That pond, which is my grandfather's big pond, and it went. That solid line, it basically followed that solid line and then went in under the street. A covert, which is floods and floods tremendously. But it's natural spring fed, so you're adding to the groundwater, that's my point. That's what's flooding.
We're we're not adding to the groundwater, I mean, the the rain, the rainwater is is the rainwater. Um, we are capturing the increasing previous coverage with on-site stormwater.
Thank you, um, would you like to next, yes? Um, can I come up and speak to your plans? My name is Justin Seiler, I live at three forty-three Franklin, and I have an Alan's Hour, so we're very. Connected and concerned about this. Um, man, thank you. Um, I have this whole big like emotional state, I'm not going to talk about it, I'm just looking at it now. When we bought the house in two thousand seventeen. We were, it's not in writing, but we were specifically told because we have this frontage. That paddock would never be built on. It was a question I asked our realtor from day one. We went back and forth, they checked down plans. I didn't get anything in writing, but that was what we assured. Clearly, this was not in anyone's. You know, future plan, I didn't know this was going to be an option. Our realtor obviously didn't know this was going to be an option. So we're fairly devastated that this frontage, which we thought was going to protect us from having a house built right in front of our house. That no longer exists. Having said that, with this plan, the problem for us. We're right here. Fine, house there, house there, house there. What we're talking about with the drainage. This leach field or pond that you're talking about is like feet. From where we have our vegetable garden, where our driveway is, which already floods every time we have a rainstorm. You're talking that that is protecting for what, did you say an eight-year storm and a twenty-five-year storm? Is that correct?
Two, five.
Two, five, and.
Um, ten.
Ten. We've seen in the last couple of years, in last seasons, these storms are getting bigger, we're getting more rain. We, our driveway comes down like this. This whole, this part of the driveway and this front yard floods consistently when we get these major rainstorms. The idea that there's going to be more water coming down here, which could impact this right here. Plus, sitting here, or you know, I don't know how long it's going to take for water to kind of seep down in. And go that way, which you're claiming it's going to do. But it also has the potential to flood over that or seep this way. We are down, we are lower in elevation than this part of the field up here and this, these properties up here. I feel like we are going to get slammed by this with flooding, with, you know. There's not a lot of trees right here, I haven't seen in the plan what you're going to keep. But in order to build this and these lines, I would imagine there's going to be a good number of trees that are coming out. And these are big tall trees, these are old trees. They provide a good barrier between our property and the existing house, but it's not a lot. And if those come down, and again, I haven't seen the plans for those. But I don't think you can put a pond and a leach field in an area where there is a root system. Of, you know, fifty to seventy-year-old trees, I don't know how that works. If those trees come down, we are basically looking at this pond of sitting water, or whatever you want to call it. Pool of sitting water, that's the pond, but every time we get a rainstorm, this is going to fill up. We sit there, hope it doesn't flood, hope it doesn't seep down. It just, it seems like an extraordinary ask for a property that's already there. Like, let's just. You know, build these other things, and I know you can do what you want if it's your property, but there is going to be a detriment to our property. Because of this. Not to mention, I mean. We need to get our own engineer, we would like to get our own engineer, that's our plan, because we are concerned about what's going to happen to our property. But the other thing, and I don't know that it's been mentioned, I didn't read your environmental impact report, but. We have spotted salamanders, we have, you know, all kinds of, and I know that's a threatened species, but we have all kinds of animals and wildlife in here. That there's going to be an impact to that, too. So I guess I'm just questioning. I don't know. I don't know what our power is as an abutter, but we are going to have a huge impact to our property because of this. It's visual, it's going to be, you know, in terms of the water flooding, it's it's a lot. So we absolutely object to this, we're hoping you will consider your butters' um, point of view on this. And in the meantime, we're going to be getting an engineer so we can kind of look at how we're really going to be affected by this and what our rights are in this. Um, we've got some people online, and I want to get to them before we forget, and we'll be familiar with that in the chat. Can you jump on the chat, do you see that? Could we have Carrie Nagel come off her, uh, come off, come off mute and talk to us?
If I could, may I just address a few of those of those comments there? So just a few things to address here. This this pond here, it's not running overland, it's it's the stormwater is being collected in this infiltration basin. And then there's an underground pipe that runs from that, from this rain garden over to this infiltration basin. Um, there is a, there there will be some screening, existing trees that will be remain there, we're not clearing right up to the lot line. Um, and then in the stormwater regulations, we're required to provide calculations to show that that this basin will draw down. Fully draw down within seventy-two hours, and we have provided that. So, um, it's, you know, it's not going to be sitting in there for weeks on end. It's it's required to draw down within seventy-two hours. And if it, and if it, it doesn't say to be, you know, right after construction, then the owner is required to come out and fix it to the point that it that it will. So. And and as far as any any overflow, the overflow is directly, so it flowed down towards this pond and this basin. The top of the basin is at sixty-two, uh, water naturally wants to flow from a high point down to a low point. Um, so this will flow from sixty-two down to fifty-six right, right into that pond. Um, and and again, any water that is coming, coming out of that infiltration basin, it's it's minimal, it's actually only in the hundred-year storm. So in the, in the two, ten, and twenty-five-year storms, that water is fully infiltrating right there in the basin.
Scott, could you talk a little bit about the rain garden and the benefits of that?
Yeah, yeah, so the the rain garden, again, with the with the state regulations, uh, one of the things we have to look at is is called TSS removal. Total suspended solids. Um, the rain garden, the purpose of that is to is to handle the the, to meet our TSS requirement. Um, so. You know, any s- soil, small particles would be, you know, they'd be gathered right there in this rain garden. Uh, this will be maintained a few times a year, and then so that way it's just essentially the water that's going into this basin. And so the rain garden won't be infiltrating, it'll actually be, it'll actually be sealed. Um, along the bottom of it, so all infiltration will just be occurring down here in this basin.
And how can you confirm that it won't go towards three forty-three and it will go to the pond? Because I don't really see like the depth on three forty-three's property. I see that it does decrease to sixty, but so it is going to go down.
Yep, so just the the natural, um, the natural existing rainfall, if you will, pattern. It's it's flowing perpendicular um, to the to the lower contour lines, so this is the way that the rain water naturally flows. Everything, everything actually goes down from, like Jessica said, towards our lines, but it floods consistently now.
I was just going to ask you, did you actually measure, I mean, no one asked to measure our property or look at our lines or anything, because. No, no, but just to be fair and accurate, someone should look at that part of our property, because we do get flooding. From rainwater, which is coming off that paddock, that field. We are down slope from that paddock as it exists right now.
And we're downhill on the other way.
Yeah, so. So, um, I I might have mentioned this in the beginning of this, when I was talking about the analysis of the the existing conditions versus the proposed conditions. So in existing conditions, um, there's a portion of water that goes to the street, a portion, the majority of it goes to this pond. Some that goes off to this abutter and some that goes off to this abutter, which which is your property. So you're, you're right, existing conditions, there is, there is an area right up in here. Again, you're looking sixty-six down to sixty-two, so there is some area up in here that does um, flow in this direction. And with this proposed design, we're redirecting a little bit of that area to go. This way into our, into our stormwater system, so we're we're decreasing the the runoff uh, that goes onto that property.
And just real quick, the the way the procedure works for a hearing like this, otherwise it will just turn into a free-for-all, is. Like, we'll stay here for the public to to voice their concern and questions, but you should ask your questions to the chair. And and the, and and the chair can direct them to the applicant, and we'll do it, and people get called on one at a time, we'll do it like that. I just want to make another general comment, maybe this already makes sense to you, so I apologize if I'm being a dead horse, but. Here's the kind of the lay of the land for these these applications. So there is law and our own subdivision regulations that we have for the town of Oxford that governs these projects. It says, here are the rules you have to follow to do it. And with the exception of Jennifer, none of us are engineers. So we, as a town, say, we're not going to take your word for it, applicant, we're going to hire our own experienced engineer who's experienced with these projects. To make sure the applicant is following the rules. The rules include addressing stormwater and runoff to neighboring properties, among many other things. So we we hire Pat Brennan to do, and you've heard him say this, that he's basically scrutinizing this project to make sure all the rules have been followed, including stormwater management. And so that's what we're required to do, and the applicant can do these projects as a right if it meets all the rules. Now, if it asks for waivers, here they're saying they're asking for two waivers, but they think that makes the project better, and they can do the project they think without any waivers. So they can just say, we follow the rules, and if Pat agrees and provides the stuff that they have, they can do this project as a right. So it's really incumbent upon, if people are frustrated with that, I'm not telling you what to do, but one of the things you can do with your time is to. Retain, get your own engineering analysis, if you disagree with the applicant or if you disagree with the town's engineer. To to get another set of eyes to look at these things, because other than that, as a board. Pretty much all we can do is is listen to the applicant, see that they've obtained a qualified engineering firm, and Brady Consulting is a qualified engineering firm. But not just take their word for it and scrutinize it, right, and see if they follow the rules. And according to our engineer, they follow the rules. You're asking for two waivers that they think makes the project better, our town engineer is saying, yeah, that sounds right. And so that's basically where it is. So we can continue to have the dialogue between you folks, I don't know if any of you are engineers, if you are, I apologize. But I think it's laypeople and the engineer with valid concerns, right, valid questions, the the purpose of tonight is to try and answer those questions. Um, but at the end of the day, unless there's some kind of competing engineering analysis that's showing that this gentleman is wrong and that our engineer is wrong. You know, we can do this all night and have this discussion, but it's really more useful to. To point out, like somehow some stormwater regulation was not adhered to, or what had, right? Or this protect species issue, or there's a wetlands issue, right? I I tried to tee this up to kind of show what the rules are and to make the applicant explain to the public and to us. How the rules were filed, and then to ask Pat to see if that's true or not, and you have Pat basically trending and saying it's true. So. I'm sorry for my wrong way to comment, but number one, as a procedure, like, please go through the chair so who you are, and. Here we'll call on you, and then that's kind of how this is all set up, that was was as far as the rules and the application and how it works. So I don't mean to be patronizing or anything like that, but I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page for the process of. Back to the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and do we have somebody else, do you mind if I give somebody else a turn?
Hi, um, we're Pat and Ron McGlocklin, and we live at three forty-seven. And if you look at the bottom corner of um, that point on the left-hand side. That is where it touches our property. Now, that's way in the back. Our house, which doesn't appear on any of these plans. Is very close to the to the paddock, the corral. Um, and we have. In the past. Probably a couple, two or three years, we have a sinkhole on our property where it fills with water. And the whole thing every spring is filled, it's going to be a pond. If the water doesn't. If the water doesn't have a place to go. Now you say on the backside, you know, some of the water is going there. We already have tons of water coming to our property and the silos property coming straight from there. And part of our property is set down probably about four feet off their driveway and our driveway. And that's what floods every year. We have another sinkhole and another sinkhole on the top of the hill. Now, one, you said seventy-one, you said seventy-two feet. No, you were seventy-two hours. Do you know how much damage the water can do in seventy-two hours before it drains? And what if we have rained for seventy-two hours? We've had to fill, we've had to, we've had a couple broken sump pumps that we've had to bail water out of our house. You're not, you know, the water doesn't just stop at those places, those, those drainage, whatever, or, or collection. It's, you have leaching fields that are going to add to the water, the groundwater, causing more water. I don't know if this is considered. I don't know if what's happening to our climate change that we're getting bigger and better storms. Is that changing anything with these plans or are they going to be the same plans? You know, from now until eternity? Does any adjustment get made when the topography changes? Because, like, I didn't have a sinkhole before. I do now. I have another one. There's one at the top of a little mound that we throw all out, we call it the pit. We've been throwing leaves. We've lived there for twenty-two years, twenty-three years. And we all throw all the leaves in the pit and the sticks, and it's gone by the spring. There's changes happening and I'm as well very concerned like the silos are, that you're, you're not checking what's going on to the houses that are in that at a lower elevation. The water's going to go where the lower ground is. And you're only checking part of it. And you're not making any changes for what's going on in the ground now. And that concerns me very much. I think as soon as this happens, you know, you're already adding water to the leaching fields. You're adding water to the ground. You're adding water. Septic systems are going to take up space. Is that all considered when you're talking about, or is it just the roof?
All right. Thank, thank you. I think let's, we've got a couple more people. We don't want to, we want to.
Okay, I can stop.
Is there anybody else we'd like to speak? I'm sorry, the woman in front, you had your hand up a while ago.
I live on Little Wood Way, which is off of Franklin.
And what's your name?
Catherine Scribby.
Okay.
I've been there for forty-two years. Things have changed on Franklin Street. This has got nothing to do with water. It's got to do with traffic. We, we had a bus stop down there. My daughter was going to school. It's very dangerous on Franklin Street. People exceed the speed limit by twenty-nine miles an hour.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And you're going to add three homes to open onto that street. They're not going to get out of there, so.
Just two homes.
And I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. That's right. Doesn't matter. That's a heavily traveled street, very, very fast. I come out of there and now the car's coming and in two seconds they're up.
Sure.
So it's a, it's a, you know, it's not an old country road anymore. Okay. So that's just my comment. And I'm, I'm concerned also for the butters and what they're dealing with. And we don't need to add any more to that area. It's a nice, nice area, but I don't think that you add anything to it. That's my opinion. I'm sorry, but.
Thank you. The gentleman in the black jacket.
Jim has a three sec, three sixty-four Franklin Street. Actually have two questions. First one is, on the plan, are you guys changing the elevation from existing elevations on those two new properties? Are you changing lower that elevation or is that pretty much where you are elevation-wise?
With, with the grading?
Yes.
So there, there is some minor grading. It's essentially to, to provide adequate groundwater separation between the bottom of leaching fields and groundwater.
Okay.
But as, as far as grading goes, it's, it's quite minimal, actually. Yeah, the road up here is sixty-three point eight, so we're going to match the road when we come in. Excuse me, we're creating a low point down here to be a collect the, the stormwater runoff. And up here at the end, sixty-five point five. So it's, it is, it is quite minimal grading. As far as it all goes.
Close to what's there now. And the other question is, I'm sorry, I should have been direct. The other question is, do we have a plan on what trees are there now? What's going to be removed and/or what would be replaced?
Yep. So we are.
We know we try to say minimal, but if minimal can be one or hungry, so.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's a good, good question. So one of the requirements of the planning board regulations is to identify each individual tree, which is, I believe it's twelve inches in diameter or greater, which is, which is within the proposed redaway. So we have identified each individual tree on there. We are intending to retain all these trees to purposes, I'm going to say the right side of this basin. So we're going to be retaining all of these trees.
So that goes along the, the fence line?
Please, please, chair.
What can we, told your question. Let's finish this one first, okay, thanks.
So we retain these trees along the fence line. And then we're, we will be removing a few with, within the redaway. Those are all identified individually on here. And we are proposing some additional plantings in an area where it's, it's existing bare, if you will.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Then I think it's boring, but you had a question.
Yep.
I did. Nick Penaggio talked was three fifty Franklin. My driver would be kind of right across from the road. But I was, I saw, I'm just trying to follow along. I wonder if you could just maybe just go back to what you were saying about the, the end of the road. Because it sounds like the, the grade is going to be fairly consistent with where it is. But I was just trying to better understand kind of the runoff catch toward the end of the roadway there where it meets Franklin Street. That was question one.
So just so I understand, are you, are you across the street?
I am, yeah. So I'd be, there, there's a, there's a driveway there right across.
Okay.
That would be where I am.
Okay.
So that was kind of question one. And then question two, I was just, one of the things that might be helpful is, is can we, would it be possible to hear from Scott as well? I don't know if Mr. Brandon Stoll, but just in terms of the scope of the sort of runoff and stormwater review and what that entails, right, for the benefit of, of everyone here. And that was maybe the heart of the question is how far does the analysis go and what's considered beyond just the laws that are here. So just to understand the scope would be helpful.
Sure. So I'll start with your, your first question. So, yeah, we're, we're not proposing any, any crazy grading at the road. We have to meet whatever, whatever elevation the street is. And because we're creating a hard surface there and impervious coverage, we created a low point right here. So stormwater within our site will flow downward to here. And stormwater from up this location will flow downward. It's all going to be gathered right here in this, it's, it's like a little kickoff. Exactly. Yeah, right off, right off the road. So, so there will be no, no increase. Well, actually, again, it'll be a decrease in, in runoff that goes into Franklin Street. But as, as far as the, the stormwater analysis goes, again, we look at the existing conditions and we look at the flow patterns of, of all the different raindrops. And we identify, we break them into what's called catchment areas or subcatchment areas. And they're often broken up where the, where the contours split. And as far as how far our analysis goes, it, it, it goes, it goes off-site because the, the regulation states that we can't be increasing any runoff off-site. So when we look at our analysis and, and our proposed design, we need to make sure that anything that goes off-site is reduced. So that's, that's where our analysis goes and that's what the state requires and that's what the, the town requires. I, I, I understand and sympathize with your concerns that the water does then go beyond. But we, again, look at the existing conditions of the site, where that water is. We figure out the volume and the rate of runoff. We have to make sure that we are improving existing conditions.
Sue Schillertan, and I'm at three fifty Franklin Street. So I'm directly across from where lot C would be going.
Yeah.
And my question is just, just about the existing leaching field. The, will that be moved? You said the, the septic tank will remain there. However, and I would imagine that would be for lot C, even though right now it's for the existing dwelling. But I guess my question is, the leaching field is at, there's a elevation between sixty-six, sixty-four. It's, I mean, I can see straight across there is a large rise. Will that leaching field be removed and redone? Or will it stay at that existing height and fill will be brought in? And then if so, will that make more water go into the pulvert, which will then go into the property of Jill and Tim?
Yep. So this existing leaching field, although right now it currently serves the existing dwelling thirty-three. So there's a, there's a pipe section that comes out into a septic tank. And then there's a pump chamber tank that pumps it up into this field.
Yes.
Again, our thought with the design is to, is to, to have as minimal impact as possible. So we decided to, we're going to essentially break this connection here. And this pump chamber is now going to pump into a new leaching field for the existing dwelling. And then this existing leaching field will be maintained and that will serve this, this unit here. So it'll be a new septic tank that comes from this building and then goes into that leaching field. The reason why it, it looks high, that's, that's the state regulation. It's, it's Title V. You're required to provide a minimum amount of, of separation between, we assume groundwater is, and so, so that, that elevation and that system will stay exactly the same.
And the new dwelling?
I'm sorry.
And the new dwelling?
Yep.
Will then be raised up?
The new, the new dwelling is proposed at, at an elevation of sixty-eight, I mean, at the top of foundation at sixty-eight. We're right around here. We see it as a contour at sixty-six. So there's, there is a, a minimal amount of grain right up in here. And essentially, it's just to be able to fit that driveway to come into the, the garage. You know, for regrading that, they'll likely just use the excavated material from the, from the building foundation and just and put it over there. But again, any, any runoff that goes off-site, it's, it's going to be reduced.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any other questions? All right. Do we have any questions online? If you do, would you like to come off? Raise a bunch and raise your hand. You can try calling on somebody that way. Like we just have four people in Wayne.
I think Carrie, Carrie had a question.
We have, we have a, we have a, a chat from a person named Carrie Nagel who says she can't, she can't join right now and asked someone to read her comments. So I guess I'll do that. I'm at three sixty-nine Franklin Street and was also told they left that lot in front of her property so that would never be built. Three sixty-nine Franklin was built in seventeen thirty. It was once a one-hundred acre farm. This proposed build is on what used to be part of this homestead. This section of town known as Crooked Lane is known for its open farmland and open space. Squeezing house into this spot is such a sad and horrible idea. That's what her chat said.
Thank you, Carrie.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I talked as long when did before, but I, my question never got answered. What about the water running down to where our lower land is? And you've already said that the water coming down is going to run to the lowest point. And we already have a sinkhole there. How is that? You, you don't even have a filtration or, or, or you don't even ever catch that. How is this going to protect our land from becoming destroyed?
So I, I don't believe that property is adjoining, abutting, correct?
It, it abuts in the very corner.
Okay.
And.
So it's in a butter, two in a butter. Okay.
Well, no, actually ours does about that back corner. On the other side of that point, on the bottom left corner is our property. Okay?
Yeah.
And it goes up along that line to the, if the silos are in their house facing Franklin Street to the left. Yes.
Okay.
So our property goes past the silo's house, probably about halfway to the paddock. It's a very short distance from the paddock. And how is the water runoff going to protect, how, how are you going to protect the water runoff from going on our property? Because it's quite a bit lower and already has. You, you, you don't have a, nothing has addressed that.
So again, to, to reiterate, we, we look at the volume and the rate of, of stormwater runoff that goes, that leaves the site and, and what we're proposing reduces that. Though there are some impervious surfaces that are added in that area, those are directed from the roof into this subsurface system. And then from the driveway down into this rain garden, which then goes to the basin. So there is, there is no, there's no increase in any stormwater that runoff from this area that's going down.
It's not going to go uphill. It's going to go downhill.
Yeah. Well, the, the, the roof, it's, it's the, the rainwater through the roof is just collected, is collected through roof drains. And that goes right into a subsurface system. And then for the, the driveway, this is, this is your higher point. And the, the rainwater, when it hits this point, it's going to flow downward to this low point that we're creating, which will then take it into the rain garden.
Scott, do you have any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, so a couple of points. That was who you are. Down inside of three forty-three Franklin, so right behind. So a couple, a couple areas. So right behind the, the leach field, so it's on the corner. Between the field and the pond. So it's kind of, there is actually, it's not just a shed. There's a barn. So we actually have already a lot of water that comes there. So that's probably within like twenty-five feet directly, within twenty feet. I don't know if you can point to that, if you don't mind having a point. Yes, that, that is a barn. That's not just a shed.
Good.
So we get quite a bit of water already back there. I, I guess the second point is, I mean, we'd like to request an engineer to take, you know, to survey the land and see how, yeah, we get our own, how, how this is going to affect us, right? I don't know if there's a timeframe that we have to, you know, bring our, limit the engineering, what the findings forward. Is there a timeframe?
So there is a timeframe. I can't, this board can't require a private property owner in town to let people have engineers go on their property. What an engineer will do is analyze the plans, the elevations, and the peer review done. We'll look at that and give you guys an opinion on that. That's something you can do if you're not, if you want to. The information is all online on our website. All the materials, these plans, everything is there. And so you can, you can retain any engineer you want to look at it.
Sorry. Jessica, I like, just to clarify what we were talking about, the timeframe is, is a decision, will we have time to do this before a decision is made? Do we get to ask that a decision be kind of held off for a little bit so we have time to get in it, our own engineer and explore this plan? And we don't, we don't like proceed in, in our case. We don't usually have that.
And Dave, you might know, I'm not a hundred percent sure I can, but I, I think that under the subdivision control act, we have a certain amount of time to make a decision after an application is filed. I think it's ninety days, but I'm not a hundred percent.
A hundred and thirty-five. It's just not a preliminary.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah. I knew there was. And so when did we receive the application?
At the end of November or early December. I think it's February and March.
Yeah, we submitted November twenty-seventh.
And when would be the buyer notified?
Yeah, we got our letter December twenty-third. It might have said December fifteenth, but we didn't get it in the mail. So there is that whole, like, two weeks or whatever. This week, we haven't been following anybody. Nobody's, nobody's open. Um, so we've, we haven't been able to act on it at all.
Do we have any other questions?
I just made the comment, Stiles on two ninety-three Franklin Street.
Okay, thank you.
What's your name, sir?
Stiles. If you're looking at his drawing, to the right of that is my brother-in-law's pasture, Chris Kaler. Next, the other side of his pasture is my front lawn. I've been there twenty-two years. I've never had rain on my front lawn till this year. And I know we've had tons and tons of it. But since I moved into that property, in the far back corner, there are days, sometimes weeks, where I can't mow that corner because it's underwater. So any water, whether they say is coming or not, any, any additional water is not welcome. I just wanted to bring that up.
Do we have any other comments from the public? Yeah.
So how do, how do we?
Say your name again.
Jill Stiles. How do we, beyond this, address this water issue that this area is having? Like I said, the culvert is clogged.
So, yeah, clogged culvert will be the DPW. Yes, I'm cleaning it out. I, I live on North Street and there's a low point right at the, off of North Street. And there's a low point where there's, it's catchways on either side of the street. They clog all the time. And it's, there's been accidents there, stuff, because the catch bases just keep getting clogged. But the culvert too, yeah, that might be detailed.
It's over, I think, open and maybe the water will drain out and not be a pond in my side yard.
Yeah. Definitely. I would have you and your neighbors contact, you and Aspen versus there, usually fully.
The only ones that we fought with, they could say the water goes history. So far that they came and looked at.
Any other comments? Yes, sir, in the back?
Hi, I'm Ron of Waltham, uh, three four seven Franklin. What happens if these trees that, that are left alone? Get, get cut down by the new owners and stuff like that? How's that gonna impact everything? And I know you can't answer it, but I'm just saying, that's the kind of thing that we're thinking about. What, what happens going forward? How will that impact us?
Would not be covered by the HOA. You'd be specified. Could be in condition of the HOA.
But they got to have, have some, that they can give to, uh, one of the things we could ask the HOA is to, um, specify, or, or be specific about the trees or have a lot or something like that. That is consideration. That, that answer your question?
It could also die too, by the way. So there's really no way to tell it. I mean, kind of a dumb question, but it, will, it, it affects us.
Well, no, and I, and I don't mean to be cynical, but, you know, trees die and things happen and my neighbor's tree could die and I could start flooding my property. I mean, like, that, that's just, that, that just happens. And so typically if that happens, you know, I'm gonna talk to my neighbor about trying to figure out how to deal with this. But unfortunately, it's, you know, that happens, those things happen in the future all the time. Those trees could fall down now and you could have, I don't even know if that would cause more watering on your property. But if that happened, and that could happen irrespective of the subdivision. So just, you know, it's just something that can happen. The point I think is that trying to figure out if this applied with the, the, the rules, regulations for making sure there's no additional runoff going to the neighboring property. And in fact, reducing it. And again, if we don't take the applicant's word or if we hire our own professional, say, let us know, you know? Is this correct? We're being told it is.
Any other questions before we close the hearing? Yes?
There's some good questions happening, should be, when the way.
Thank you.
Um, do you have any sense of how long, as far as the noise factor, you're taking down trees? How much property you're clearing? I'm living that right now. I'm templewood. They've been cutting trees all day long for five days solid. Very, very disturbing. How long do you, you know, I know you don't have an exact timeframe. I know I've taken down multiple trees and I have more than multiple and for safety reasons. But you have any idea of how long your, you know, this excavation and tree work would go on and moving forward with this project?
Scott, that might be, you can just address kind of the timeline and how long it would be kind of start to finish.
Sure. Um, so just first of all, there are time of day restrictions where construction can and can't go on. Um, but what, what I believe is, what I believe the plan to be is, is to first, um, construct the roadway. Um, we gotta rehab this house and then plan to put in a septic system and then sell this one. Um, I believe that plan is for this year. Um, and then plans to, to take one house at a time, one house and associated utilities at a time. I believe that will be in twenty twenty-five. Um, I mean, a lot of it will obviously be financially driven on, on when it, when it can be done. But as far as the roadway goes, the plan is for this year.
Thanks. Thank you for sharing. All right. Any other questions? All right. Do we need a motion to close the hearing?
Yep.
We have a motion to close the public here. So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, I, 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 I oppose closing the hearing at this point. I would in fact move to continue the hearing, uh, until our February fifth hearing date. Such that the, the folks in the audience and the immediate butters could in fact, uh, do whatever engineering analysis they intend to do. Um, we have ample time under the guidelines as to when we need to rule. And we've heard multiple requests to hire, uh, their own engineer. And I would like to respect that. So I, I would oppose closing the hearing.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Do I make a motion that we continue the public hearing to February fifth?
Yeah. The birthday or the second? Uh, I believe, well.
All right. Well, then I, I move that we continue to February twelfth.
I'll, I'll second that motion. If that's still within the time, the hundred thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't wanna do it in the twenty-second? I don't think that gives them that time.
That's cool vacation with you. It might be.
Oh, you're talking about January twenty-second? I forgot it was second.
Uh, maybe more time.
Okay. All right. So then February twelfth is our next, okay. Let me clarify. Okay, sorry.
Second, Wayne's motion.
All right. Any discussion on that? Um, all right, so. Uh, we'll, uh, do a roll call to continue the, uh, public hearing to February twelfth.
I, Dave.
I, Kristen.
I, Allison.
I, Jen.
I, Wayne.
Thank you. The motion passes. We'll carry, we'll continue the, the public hearing. I understand what that means. You have an, is that out here?
And Emily, if you don't have access to the documents that we have, Emily can show you where they are. They're all, they should be all posted online. And just, I just put on the playing with website. There's, there's a whole agent in this project. Yeah. So show those to the engineer. They contain all the elevations and map right here as you.
All right.
Thank you.
Scott. Good job. Right. We're here, I'm Scott. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
Hi, Dan. How are you? Merry Christmas.
I see you walking all the time.
I cry.
You're so good.
We have the same concern. Excuse me. Take the conversation outside. We, we still have. Thank you.
All righty.
All right. Next item on the agenda, annual town meeting, twenty twenty-four, recommendation relocation of a layout of Washington Street as a town way. So we need to make a formal recommendation to the town to accept the engineering video of Washington Street. Okay. We have a, kind of a motion enough to that, do we? I thought I saw something.
Uh, it's, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
It's like this same motion you would make to accrue something at the public place, like what you did with the.
All right. So it's not any, technically it's not any different than that. Yeah, relocation. You know, turn about the roads or pretty much.
It's only been four hundred years.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So entertain a motion to recommend approval of the relocation of the layout of Washington Street as a town way.
So move. Anything you said or something wrong against the Eagles on those sides?
They are voting in general.
Oh, okay.
All vote, all, any further discussion?
I still have a question that just confirmed. So the complete streets program is covering the construction of it.
It would, most things, the way these have been dealt with in the past anyway, if somebody's fences there and we're not putting the sidewalk in where that fence is, we tend to leave it be.
But if they are, so, you know, walk on it, Washington Street.
You can see where all the stakes.
Yeah, exactly.
And if the sidewalk's gonna be there, that fence is in the middle of a sidewalk type situation. The town in doing the project for the sidewalk would move it. Uh, similarly, if somebody has a rock wall that's in that area, you know, get cut back. And the construction project will go in, will keep it back. So you don't, you don't put that, end up putting that bonus on the homeowner, so you were unaware at the time. Obviously, the homeowner came along and did something obstructive after we cut the stakes in and we passed everything, we might have a problem with that. But anybody else, that tends to be, that stuff gets moved and relocated as necessary.
And this is being covered by, right?
Well, our plan for doing the work is getting grants to sections of it at a time. Yes. If we have a town, then boom, two. With the whole thing in and we're gonna take another couple of million dollars or whatever we do to do it, then, then we'd be addressing it all at the same time. Yeah, that's not a miss. This is just a thing, let's accept it. And, and recommending the annual town meeting that we accept. All right. Motion second, uh, called for a roll call vote. All in favor?
Kristen, aye.
Scott, aye.
Allison, aye.
Jen, aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Dave. Uh, last item on our agenda is discussion of Nash Road plantings.
No, I, I didn't freak you out because it's sort of a goofy thing. So I think I mentioned to you that a friend who's a homeowner on Nash Road.
To the pretty new development on, uh, surplus, surplus.
Um, said, we, um, we want to improve upon the plantings that are on the drive.
I want to do more.
We wanna do more than what's on the approved site plan. And in talking to them further, I've discovered that they've actually already done plantings. They've actually put in their own trees. They wanted upgrades. They didn't wanna wait four years for the development. And so as a result, I kind of, I should.
And asking the right of way for the road.
I, I, that's a little, I kinda wanted to get some guidance. So I almost, I almost felt like they made, uh, a change in the site plan.
The homeowners, the homeowners. Is this Mrs. Peachella? Okay. Cause I was talking to someone who was on Nash Road about Chad Elliott. Okay. She was talking to someone.
Are they looking to do a little bit more?
She was saying that she was the last homeowner who built a house and her neighbors were upset that the tree and tree was dying as she was.
One, I got the, especially I got was that they had, uh, Gilbert had not been any of them. And so. Just the, uh, homeowners, like, what do we do? We're just having a conversation with them. But it turns out that they might have changed the site plan instead of that.
They haven't changed where anything's located. I mean, the site plan doesn't show, but the tree's exactly here.
Well, and more trees are a good thing, right? Yeah, right. But, but they might have said, maybe have it like a sugar maple here. They put in a.
Put in a different tree.
A different tree. There. It's not gonna be, it's supposed to be in the driveway, but they put it closer to their house. So do we, do anything, just let it go when it comes up or just, okay?
I don't, I personally don't think.
If, if it's still being developed, I would say take it up the building, if it feels like it requires that, that it come before us. So adjust to, to permission to change the site plan, then the builder should do that.
But if they're doing more planting, so they pick a different type of tree, they wanna put it closer to the house.
It all sounded like they were.
Yeah. That's fine. You can only do more. They tend to be at the lower limits on the plants. If they want bigger trees or they wanna put more trees, they just gotta take care of them.
Wayne, do you wanna weigh in on that or you feel good?
I, I'm fine.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, looks like we don't have anything else on the agenda, right?
I'll just throw one thing out there. I mentioned to Scott, I was late for open forum. So I've, I've been on the board for over ten years. My term is up in Marquise. I've decided I'm not going to run again for another term. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's great when we have, um, an open spot and lots of people hopefully getting interested in having a good election for it. So I, I, you know, if you wanna tell people, we're gonna tell people that and I think it's great to have turnover over time. It's good to get a big experience on the board too, but, um, it'd be great if we let, without the rung, not see. But it's been a pleasure to serve. I'm glad they'll be here for two more months, but.
I miss you. Appreciate your.
Thank you for all your help and my expertise, your legal expertise.
My pleasure.
Been great. Worked with you the whole, whole time you've been?
Yep, that's right. And Jen too.
Oh, Jed, you don't wanna go to me?
So please, please, you know, get the word out to people who are hungry to serve the town and great, great board to be on. Yeah. Yeah.
All my young friends in town.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, Dave, thank you today for helping me. I, I saw what you were doing and they were in the question when you were talking to Scott initially. And I appreciate the fact that you're, he continued with the concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was real, I thought that was really helpful.
And if there's a disconnect on process and like how we got to this point, then there's just gonna be, the tortures and fishbords are gonna come out. Instead of everyone understands what the process is and then ask. Yeah.
David, are you also now declaring for Josh Cutler's seat?
Yeah. No, no.
Doing a fine job.
Promoted.
So now we've an open seat.
I took Josh Cutler's seat on the plan board, but he got it.
Yeah, see? So you can just follow along in this.
Wayne, that's. I was wondering, that would mean that he's secretly.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's special.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay. Oh, okay. Most of you here, do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
All those in favor, Ivan, roll call, roll call it.
Ivan.
Kristen, aye.
Scott, aye.
Allison, aye.
Jen, aye.
Wayne, aye.
All right. Good night, everyone.